Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, and welcome to our Portsmouth City Council meeting. I want to thank all who are in attendance, in addition to our city staff who is with us today. I also want to acknowledge the presence of our city manager, deputy city manager, Dr. Coleman, our city attorney, Ms. Lavonda Graham-Williams, and our deputy city clerk, Ms. Anita Sharad. Thank you all for being here, and thanks to my colleagues. I will now ask for Reverend Nathaniel Page of First Baptist Church Elm Avenue to come forward with our invocation, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Pastor Page.
Amen, amen. Father, in the name of Jesus, Father, we come on this afternoon just to say thank you. Father, we thank you for last night lying down and early morning rising up. Father, we thank you for new grace and new mercy. Most of all, Father, we thank you for your son, Jetha, who you sent down to die for our sins. Father, we come this evening, Father. We come all together, Father, some come individually, Father, but we come, Father, in your name, in the name that matters, and that name is Jesus. Father, we come to conduct business, Father, on behalf of the city of Portsmouth. Father, we ask you right now that you pour wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to the councilmen and councilwomen and to the mayor of this great city that we call Portsmouth. Father, we are here, Father, as they make decisions that let us know what is best and what is great to make Portsmouth even a better place to live in, Father. Father, we ask you that you would bless them right now, each and every one individually, Father. Father, we ask you in the name of Jesus, bless the police officer, Father, as they go out, Father, to patrol the streets so important to make streets and our lives better for us, Father. Father, we thank you for them, Father. Keep a heads of safety around them, Father, in the mighty name of Jesus. Father, we pray for the residents of the city of Portsmouth, Father. Father, give them a good understanding, Father. Father, let the city councilmen and councilwomen and mayor of this great city that we call Portsmouth, Father, make good decisions on behalf of the city of Portsmouth, Father. Father, give them the knowledge, Father, and the understanding when the people come behind this podium and ask questions, Father. Let them know, Father. Give them the understanding and wisdom, Father, to give them an answer that they need, Father. Father, give them something they can take back, Father, and make them feel even better, even safer, Father. Father, we thank you for this great day, a day we've never seen before and a day we'll never see again. So, Father, we ask you to send your Holy Spirit, Father, and let it hover down on us this afternoon, Father. Let it move from heart to heart and breast to breast. Father, we love you, we praise you, in Jesus's name, amen.
Dr. Page?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask my colleagues on council to please note your presence electronically.
Seven members of city council are present.
Thank you, ma'am. We have the minutes of a called meeting on May 27, 2025, and a regular meeting on May 27, 2025. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
Second.
Second.
Please vote electronically.
We have just a little trouble. Just one second.
Okay, let's reset. Please vote electronically.
The minutes have been adopted, 7-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are now moving on in our agenda. The next item on the agenda, we have a presentation. And the presentation is a proclamation to... I want to make sure I pronounce your name correctly, young man. Is it Ian?
Yes.
Ian Lindo, if you would please come forward, sir. Thank you, sir. Come on forward, Ian, I'm not going to bite you. Well, first of all, before I read this proclamation, I just want to take a moment, and I'll give you a moment to say something after we read the proclamation. But on behalf of our council, I want to just acknowledge your success and the hard work that you've put in, and we're so proud of you, and we're looking forward to hearing big things. Okay? Here we go. Whereas it is an honor and privilege to celebrate the 2025 Coast Guard Military Child of the Year, Ian Lindo, and his achieved academic success. And whereas Ian, 17, graduated as class valedictorian, the first black male student in a decade from IC Norcom High School in Portsmouth, Virginia, with an associate degree from Tidewater Community College. Whereas he was also honored by the college board with the National African-American Recognition Program for outstanding academic achievement. And whereas, along with his work in the classroom and organizations, Ian has provided more than 500 hours of community service in the past two years, volunteering in elementary school classrooms within the division. And whereas Ian is the son of retired Lieutenant Michael Lindo and Michelle Afat?
Efat.
Efat. Michael Lindo served 27 years on active duty in the Coast Guard, and that service has had a long-lasting impact as the values of discipline, resilience, and a strong sense of duty were instilled in Ian. And whereas Ian's friends, family, and mentors have all inspired him on his journey. He hopes that becoming a civil engineer, he can create solutions that will strengthen communities and come back home to Portsmouth. Now therefore I, Shannon E. Glover, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, do hereby proclaim June 10, 2025, as 2025 Coast Guard Military Child of the Year, Ian Lindo Day. Thank you. In Portsmouth, and I encourage all members of our community to celebrate this young man's achievements and offer the best wishes for his future endeavors and witness whereof. And on behalf of the Portsmouth City Council, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Portsmouth, Virginia, to be affixed this 10th day of June, 2025. Congratulations, young man.
Thank you. I would just like to say thank you to the... I would just like to say thank you to the city council. I think this is an amazing honor, and I really look forward to coming back to Portsmouth one day and helping serve this community.
And thank you, Mom and Dad, for raising an awesome young man. Madam Clerk, would you please read the council rules?
City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. For minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his/her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on in our agenda, we are now at the item of public hearings. Item 25-159, Public Hearing on Use Permit Applications. The first item, Item A, UP-23-24. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing resolution?
Victory Boulevard in Deep Creek Boulevard. Resolution running the request of Grossman Trucking LLC for a use permit to operate a shipping container chassis storage yard at 680 Military Road in the Light Industrial Zoning District. The property is owned by Jonathan and Lesla Lauter, and the future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as a mixed-use corridor. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions, and the resolution reads as follows: "A resolution granting a use permit to Grossman Trucking LLC to operate a shipping container chassis storage yard on a parcel having an address of 680 Military Road."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is the applicant with us today? If you would please come forward, state your name and address, and ma'am, you will have 10 minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, city manager, city attorney, and staff. For the record, my name is Lisa Murphy. I'm an attorney with Wilcox Savage with an office at 440 Monticello Ave. in the city of Norfolk. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, Grossman Trucking, who, as the clerk has indicated, has applied for a use permit to operate a shipping container chassis storage yard at 680 Military Road. I have with me tonight my client's engineer, Mike Palcovic, who is also available to answer questions that you may have. Grossman Trucking is a family-owned trucking business whose primary purpose is to receive, store, and forward, and otherwise dispose of cargo from the port for its customers. So customers hire Grossman Trucking to either pick up a shipping container loaded to bring to the port or to go to the port and to receive a shipping container to bring to the clients. They have 16 trucks, and their trucks are driving all over the country at any given time. The applicant intends to store shipping containers on chassis overnight on a portion of the subject property, which it leases from the owners, Jonathan and Lisa Luter. They're the owners of the property. The majority of the property, which you're looking at now, it's 2.3 acres. There is a small rectangle in the middle that my client does not lease from the Luters, so that's not the subject of the use permit. The easternmost corner along Deep Creek, this is an older photo, was used by another tenant at a time for, we'll call it, outdoor storage, but it became kind of unsightly. That corner is now cleared and is part of the concept plan that you have in front of you. The staff report indicates that there was a zoning violation. I just wanted to go out and explain what happened there. My client had been using this property or a portion of the property that wasn't the outdoor storage to basically park his truck and the shipping containers with the chassis, or the chassis with the shipping containers on top. Did not realize that use permit required, or that use required a use permit in the light industrial. And so that's when they got the notice of zoning violation, called me. We actually appealed the notice of zoning violation because I think their use fits into a couple of different definitions, one or two of which wouldn't require a use permit. So that case has been put on hold. We've applied for the use permit, and that's why we're here before you tonight. As I said, the subject property is 2.3 acres. There is a six-foot chain link fence that currently surrounds the exterior of the property. And there was a fence in between the eastern corner where the, I'm going to call it a junkyard, where the outdoor storage was, that has been removed. And all of those cars that you see there have been removed from the site. That allows for, if we could go to the next slide that shows the site plan, there you go. That shows how they'll be able to circulate within the site. So they'll come in off of Victory Boulevard, take a right into the property, and then they'll exit to the right and then take a left onto Deep Creek. The staff has added a condition that the trucks will have to go left or right. When they get to the intersection, they can't go north, which is fine with my client. The location of the entrance has actually been shifted, and we shifted it right before planning commission because there was a comment from the adjoining property owner about there being a little bit of an encroachment. So the entrance has been moved over. It'll be a commercial-grade paved entrance to VDOT standards. The entire property right now is base aggregate, so it's gravel right now. There won't be any further improvements to the gravel. As I said, the property's been cleared, so the area is available for use. The shipping containers on top of the chassis will be stored in that easternmost and in the center of the property. And then the green area is where they park the trucks. So part of the reason my client didn't think this was storage is because the shipping containers aren't there very long. They're only there if they get to the port just before it closes and they have a pickup, and it's too late to move on to wherever they need to drop off the goods or if they're coming back from, let's say, Georgia, and they've got a container loaded up, and the port just closed. They've got to plant the shipping container and the truck overnight, and then they pick it up in the morning when the port opens. So that's part of the reason that they didn't think that this use was necessarily one that required a use permit. You'll see along the rear of the property, there'll be a landscape buffer that is installed, and there'll be a fence, opaque fence at the rear of the property. As the clerk mentioned, staff has recommended approval with nine conditions. Your planning commission has also recommended approval with those nine conditions. We talked about a couple of them. One of them is that there won't be more than 75 trips a day. We had talked to staff several times about this project. With 16 trucks, 75 is pie in the sky. They typically have four, five, maybe 10 trips, a truck coming in, maybe a truck leaving for the day. So it really isn't a very intense, active-type use. But it is port-related, and as your staff report indicates, the comprehensive plan for the area focuses on intensifying development with proper buffering from residential neighborhoods. And the proposed use is appropriate, according to your staff, for, at this proposed location because it does support maritime and logistics business in the city. It will not have a negative impact on adjacent properties or the surrounding traffic network and the overall economic impact. I know the staff report says the economic impact is small, but this is a small business, and the economic impact on them is huge. So having the ability to continue to operate their trucking business in the city is a big deal for them. If they aren't able to get the use permit, they'll have to shift and possibly move to another city. So again, small impact on the city. You may get some additional revenue via real estate taxes, but it's a huge impact for this small business client. I, as I said, staff is recommending approval with nine conditions. Planning Commission has also recommended approval. We respectfully request that you approve the application, and I'm happy to stand by for questions and to offer rebuttal.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions for my colleagues on council? Councilman Dotson, sir, you have the floor.
I have a number of questions for you. Is this the home base for this company?
Well, the, yes, they're located in Portsmouth. They had a trucking repair business right next door at 684.
Is this where their business license is registered, though?
For their, well, that's part of the zoning violation, so they went to try to get a business license, and that's when it was determined that they didn't have the proper use permit for the property. So they do have a business license for the trucking repair business, but it's my understanding that they applied for but couldn't get the business license for this.
Are the trucks and the chassis registered? In what state and what locality?
My client's here, I don't know the answer to that. I assume they're registered in Virginia. Jesse, do you want to address that?
Yes, ma'am, if you would come forward and please speak in the microphone. State your name and address, please. And that's just for our record.
Hi, my name is Jesse Cook. My address is 201 St. James Avenue, Suffolk, Virginia. The trucks are registered in Indiana. It's through our, we are agents for Carolina National. So our motor carrier number, DOT number, and all that is registered through Carolina National. They order their tags and register their trucks through Indiana.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other question. There was, in the planning hearing, there was a matter of some improvements made that changed the draining for the neighbor. Has that been corrected?
Yeah, if we could go back to the aerial photo, maybe? Yep, let me explain. So if you look, I don't know if there's a pointer, to the left, so it would be the western property line, you see where the container is on the adjacent property. There is a fence along that black line. The adjacent property owner actually dug a ditch on this property to drain his property. And so we, they're brothers. Jonathan Luter owns 680 Military Road. Dave Luter owns 684. We've met with Dave Luter's and his counsel, and as far as we know, there isn't an easement to drain onto 680, but that's what's happening now, 684. The stormwater from that property is actually draining onto 680, which is the subject property. So my client isn't changing anything about the gravel or anything about that surface. It's just the improvements to the front and to the rear. So there's, I think that's a, we've asked Mr. Luter's attorney and now his second attorney to, you know, talk about
Talk about it.
some kind of an easement. Yeah, but we've already had one meeting to discuss it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. I think I had a question, but in general, I understand you are a receiving from the ports. Does that include chemicals at all for your storage facility or for your storage and transportation at all? Any type of hazardous chemicals at all?
No, ma'am. The hazardous that we carry is Class 8 and Class 9.
Okay.
And batteries, things like that. So, but they don't normally come, and they're not stored on the property.
Okay.
They're received from the port, and they go where they're going.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Are there any additional questions for my colleagues for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you both. Well, I did have one question, excuse me. Don't leave just yet. Were you able to talk to the residents that property is close nearby to the facility?
So if you, if you look at the map, the one, and you can't really see it, maybe go back to the aerial that shows the zoning, the zoning map. Could you go back to that? Yeah, so the closest property, no, well, I guess you could see it on there. The closest property, I think, is 520 or 5020, and then 2054, I can't read it. Those are actually zoned industrial, and our property owner leases that property to a tenant, and they did speak with that tenant. We're not aware, this business has been operating for several years, and they've not had any issues with the other property owners to the rear.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So to that point, if you've been operating for several years and you just now applied for a business license, apparently you've been operating for several years without a business license, is that true?
Was it the business license or the notice of zoning violation that came first?
The, I don't know the answer.
Yeah, I mean, we've got one other representative here for the... I'm not sure which came first, the zoning violation or the business license issue.
I'm sorry, I can't answer.
Okay, sir, if you're going to be answering the question, I need you to state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Jonathan Luter. I live at 428 Plumber Drive, Chesapeake, Virginia, 23323. And to give you a little history, I had another section in the back that I guess he's storing the chassis. And he was renting from my brother at 684. We had parted the fence. We agreed on parting the fence, and he was running through 684. And I guess Grossman Trucking, I assumed that he had a business license. He had a business license over there for my brother. He was running in and out of, in and out of my brother's lot. And then I think, from me reading back, I think in 2021, just after COVID, I think y'all started requiring chassis storage and having a use permit. That's why you've seen probably a lot of these come forward probably the last two years, from my research. I've seen numerous ones pop over the last two years. So hopefully that clarified your answer. I know somehow he was, I can't speak for Grossman Trucking. He's just been renting from me. My brother said, hey, just clean off that lot in the back. And so he rented, and Adam came over and said, hey, I'll rent it, I need more space. So it's kind of all been, he's been, had the business license from my brother on 684. I think he had a business license in the city of Chesapeake for Grossman Trucking. And I don't know where, so hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, I'm afraid it doesn't. So my understanding is the reason that the zoning violation even was raised is because the business owner was applying for a business license. And I know in the business license application process, there is a step to pass through the zoning office to confirm that the property is in fact correctly zoned, and that's when the zoning issue was flagged. Yes?
No, I believe somebody was over there at the lot. One of your personnels from planning commission was over there close to the lot, and I think somebody said, hey, what's going on over there?
Okay, so...
And I think that was, I think that was just, it wasn't... And then that's when they got in contact with me, sent me a letter. So I immediately went to Adam and said, hey, you need to address this. And I said, I said, you need to go, you know, make sure you have proper credentials with the city.
Okay, so does Grossman Trucking have a business license today or not?
I would say yes in the city of Chesapeake.
I'm not talking about Chesapeake. We don't have any authority in Chesapeake.
Right, so let me clarify. One of the things that Jonathan was trying to point out that I didn't really provide too much clarity on. Grossman Trucking has a repair business called Tidewater Diesel that was operating at 684. And so as Jonathan said, as part of that, they were parking trucks. And I think it just, now that there's more land to rent, they're looking to expand the use. I got the call right before Christmas 2023 that they got the notice of zoning violation. They were afraid to be put out of business, and that's when I got engaged. I know there was a business license application involved, but I'm not sure which triggered which. But I don't think they could have gotten a business license because of the violation.
Okay, and I suspect that what you suspect is true. So the reason I bring that up, as you pointed out, ma'am, the planning commission approved this with conditions. Conditions are rules. And there are some pretty important rules in these conditions that either need to be followed or if they're not followed, then the use permit can be revoked. And I know that there, having attended the planning commission meeting, there were concerns from neighbors regarding some of these rules being complied with. And so if the pattern is we operate without a business license, we operate without correct zoning, then I'm trying to confirm that we understand these conditions are rules and they have to be followed or you lose the use permit, which means everything shuts down. Just want to understand that we're expecting you to follow the rules. Thank you.
And I've just, I've been very clear with them on that. And as I said, I've been involved since Christmas-ish time of 2023. So they've, they've invested a lot of time and money to try to get this situation rectified, and they understand the severity and the consequences.
Thank you.
One last question. Do we have a business license today? Does the business?
As far as I know, not at this location because of the zoning violation.
Okay.
So once, my understanding is once, once they get the use permit, then they can get a business license.
Okay, that, that, that will prompt the other action. Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, thank you both. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have a registered speaker for this particular public hearing item, and that registered speaker is Dave Luter. Mr. Luter, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Yeah, hello, my name is David Luter. I live at 906 Melvin Drive in Portsmouth, Virginia, and I'm adjacent property owner of 684 Military Road in Portsmouth. I have a couple pictures I'd like to pass out to you that might help clarify stuff a little bit.
Please give it to the sergeant-at-arms, and he will distribute them appropriately. Thank you, sir.
The first picture shows the, the property, my main concern with the, with the, they're putting the storage jar there is they're proposing building an apron right there in front of my property that extends over into my, front of my gate. That other picture kind of shows it more clear, but I have a back gate to my property we use like for fire lane. And we're worried that they build that apron there, it'll block entrance and exit out that fire lane. And they were talking about like a V dot apron. A V dot apron has a curb on it, which would block us from going in and out of the gate we have right now. Also, I was worried about the utilities we have down that, I have a building right, like three buildings right in a row, I don't know if you can see them right there on the property line. But the utilities for the, for the second building all go down alleyway. There's a gas line, electric line, sewer lines, water lines and all that. And the, the apron would make it very difficult to tie in in the future to any utilities that might have to be worked on or added to or whatever. Another issue that we, we had is the, is, like he was talking about that ditch down the side of the property line. That, that, it's a swell that, if you see in that first picture, it was like from 1985, it shows like an older building. And it, yeah, it shows the house. See that, that entrance was, there was actually a house right where that entrance was in the, I forgot what I was saying. The, that swell down the side has been there for my whole life, since I was a little kid. I cut the grass out there with a push lawnmower. But they, when they put a fence up around 1995 or 94, they, they put the fence up right in the middle of the swell. And so we never really had a whole lot of problems with the swell up until Mr. Grossman, they dumped like 50 truckloads of dirt or crushed concrete over on the property. It actually raised the property up like two feet. The, the grade was around 11 feet above sea level. Now it's like 13 feet above sea level. And when they did that, they, the spoil all washed over. They, they tried not to get anything on the, right next to the fence when they put the, the dirt in there. But when it rained, all the, the rain washed the silt in and it filled the ditch up and actually washed silt over from my property. And eventually the water started pond, ponding in between the buildings. That building in the front was, you can see in that picture, it was built around 1947, 48, somewhere right there. And it's very low to the ground, it has timbers that are right on top of the ground. I mean, it's like within a quarter inch of the ground. And so any pond of water would cause the building to rot. So I was very worried about it. And they said, I just went over and dug the ditch back out. Mr. Grossman actually came over and helped me for several days. I spent like two weeks over there cleaning the ditch back out. I have a backhoe, when I dug out the backhoe, Mr. Grossman has a bobcat. And he came over the bobcat, he was going to try to put the dirt in various low spots around the yard. Well, we quickly found out there's way too much dirt. I ended up hauling like about five truckloads of dirt out that swell. And alls I did was taper it from the, the bottom of the fence up to the, the top where he had, up to the, the grade where he had brought it to, which is about two foot at the highest point. And, and my brother loaned me his trailer, so they said I just went and did it. It really wasn't me just doing it. I used Adams, Mr. Grossman's bobcat the whole time. He got tired of helping me, and so I kept on working on it for several days. Had to get a trailer, use my brother's trailer to haul it away. But, but the main concern was it was pushing the fence down. I think Adams may, he had got somebody to come over and give him a price on fixing the fence. The fence was bowing out. It all the way down where the, all the gravel was pushing against it. And the guy told me, I think like $10,000 to dig out the dirt and stretch the fence back out. But once we dug the dirt out, the fence kind of took shape again. We, you know, fixed a couple of ties and it's, it's in pretty good shape now. Y'all, y'all were asking about the business license. Mr. Grossman rents four, was renting four, four buildings from me. One, two of the buildings, it's like the whole building, in one building, he rented like two bays. In one of those bays, he had his dispatch office. And I didn't really find out after all this started happening, he said he doesn't need my place anymore, so he was going to quit renting it. I went in and started taking pictures of the dispatch office.
Sir, sir, you, you, you had five minutes to talk, sir.
Thank you.
Your, your time is up.
You have any follow-up questions? I guess it's. And my engineer, Sam.
Sir? Thank you, sir. So does, does the engineer have a question? Or someone has a question? Oh, Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. My question is just kind of taking all this in from the package and what the information that was shared today from the line of questioning. The issue, the zoning issue came up November 2023. And so I have a question, I guess, back for the applicant. Since you have not had a business license and that zoning issue came up in 2023, has the business still been operating since 2023, since that time, or has it stopped?
So on the back corner of the property, yes. Not in the area that was recently cleaned up, that they haven't expanded into that. But we filed, so the zoning violation happened in 2023. I filed a, an appeal to the BZA within the 30-day period. And that, your Jeff Miller from the city attorney's office and I have agreed that that, that appeal of the zoning violation is on hold pending this conditional use permit process.
So they have, they have been operating a part of their business, but not?
They've been, yeah, they've been parking the, the trucks and the chassis in that back corner.
But that doesn't have a, that has a business license note at all either, right?
No, not as far as I know, no.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Tillis, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. So just for clarity, to follow up on Councilwoman Thomas's question. So I understand the use permit and the land use, but the business has still been operating since November 2023? Because there's, there absolutely is no business license?
No, because they can't get the business license until the use is straightened out.
So, but, but they still been operating since November of 2023?
They have, yeah. Honestly, they have been parking the, the trucks and the chassis.
Gotcha. So we haven't got to the vote part yet, but I'm going to express my sentiments now. I'm going to be voting no on this because to me, there's a lot of rules that have been broken to this point. And to Councilman Hugel's point, there's a lot of conditions that are really important to follow. And listening to the previous speaker, it seems like it's been a habitual thing for a while. And I, I don't feel comfortable voting for this, so I'll be voting no.
Okay, I just wanted to say you've, just for clarity, you've got two brothers who are fighting over some land. And if you notice the, the property line, I'm not sure how it could be a shared drain because David Luter has shipping containers and all kinds of equipment right up to the fence. So there's, the only place for it to drain is on my client's property. And to that point, I mean, they've, this has taken a lot of time to get to this point, and they engaged me once they knew they had an issue. And, you know, they, they understand the severity of this.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So to the acting city attorney, I'm sorry, the acting city manager, sorry. So, so to the, to the, to the comments that were made by our last speaker regarding the berm and the, all of that. So I looked through the package and the package says, engineering, no comments received. I don't know whether that means engineering did something or didn't do something. Do you know if engineering has actually reviewed the concerns of the other property owners in the area to make sure that the solutions that have been proposed are going to be okay?
Councilman Hugel, I did not have that information at the time. I can get it for you. But again, if it says no comment, I can't confirm if, if they actually saw it and didn't have a comment or they hadn't seen it. And I don't have an engineer with me. But Dr. Russell, mayor, is it okay?
Miss, Dr. Coleman, you have the floor? So you're welcome to call your staff if you choose.
Thank you. Dr. Russell, do you have some information to add to that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
This question was raised at the Planning Commission meeting and staff committed to contact our engineering department. And so I'd like to read the statement from engineering regarding the drainage conveyor, conveyor system.
Ma'am, could, could you do me a favor? Could you come to the microphone and, and, and present that, please? Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Russell.
All right, we have a June 4th statement from our engineering department in response to staff's question about the alleged field material on the site in the proposed swell. And the statement reads, based on our maps, we have no drainage conveying system in that area. If there was a private swell field and on private property, the issue is between the property owners and is a civil matter.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Once again, ladies and gentlemen, are, are we, we clear from council? Are we clear for, from asking questions? Okay, so this is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak before council on this public hearing item, you're welcome to come forward. You are not required to have signed up. State your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Sir, come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Sam Boraki. I'm a professional civil engineer, been practicing engineering for over 45 years. I'm here tonight in behalf of Mr. David Luter, the owner of QMB Building LLC, the property adjacent to 680 Military Road. My client has an objection to the conditional use permit as is presented. His main objection is because this conditional use permit, that entrance right there shown, the entrance taper is actually extend in front of his entrance. He has an access behind the building and the property line where he has used that as a loading area, also as an access to all his utilities behind those buildings. And this building's been there for a long, long time. So having the entrance so close as the property line, it prevent him, because that entrance is a CG13 V dot standard, which has a six-inch curb at the radius. When you put six-inch curb, you prevent somebody from actually accessing to the, the back of his building back there. And I think he passed some pictures, and if you look at the, one of the pictures, which was shown on one of the slides, this picture here, it shows his existing entrance right behind the building. With, with the entrance as shown, that prevent him access to his property. The second issue has to deal with the existing swell between the two properties. I have some, a pictures here from a video which was taken by the owner of 680, a video showing drainage coming in from Mr. Lut, David Luter's to the adjacent property. It's true, there is no easement. This property been, been in the family since 1946. And the property been divided between the two brothers. And normally, when you have a property, there is a swell between the two properties for, to help for drainage. The access, as it's shown, as it was shown, will block that drainage from Mr. Luter's, Mr. David Luter's property and will, will cause flooding to his buildings. Because like he's mentioned earlier, his building is actually built in the, in the 40s, which it did not, was not built in accordance with the current building code, which it calls, blocking that drainage will cause flooding to his building. I want to pass this picture, if I may, which he may have passed that one. This picture, as I mentioned, was taken from a video present, taken by the owner, the applicant actually, showing that drainage actually coming from David Luter's property into this ditch. In this video, there is a fence at the property line, and then there is a gate. It's a pedestrian gate. That gate, if you look at the bottom of the gate, is just like two, three inches higher than the, the ditch. Normally, when you build it, when you build a gate, you don't build it below ground. You build it so you open it, and that gate opens actually to the applicant property. So, and, and you could see in this picture where the water, where the water actually running from David property into this swell. So have, putting an access so close to the fence, that's going to block Mr. David Luter's drainage and cause flooding. So that's his main concern with this. He, he's willing to remove his objection to this application if two, two or three conditions or two or three condition B pose on this application. One is the ditch between the two property be maintained and be maintained and also to provide a positive drainage. That's number one. Number two is move the entrance away from the property 25 feet in accordance with V dot standard, which it call for the entrance to be 25 feet. And this is the standard, if I may pass it as well to council, so you can see it. It requires 25, the, the entrance to be 25 feet from a property line. No, that's it. 25 feet from the property line rather than this. And the reason so you don't block somebody from accessing their property.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Your time is completed.
I'll stand by if somebody have a question.
Councilman Hugel.
Yeah, so.
For a minute.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I don't, I, I'm assuming that you're talking about the paved commercial entrance on that picture that's causing all these problems, yes?
That's, that entrance, that paved commercial entrance shown to be proposed on that picture, yes, sir, that will cause, that will prevent David from accessing the back of the, the building, that white building shown on the adjacent property, because it will have six-inch curb and will prevent him from accessing his already existing gate, which has been there since, you know, 35, over 35 years ago.
I'm not sure how I understand a six-inch berm is going to block an access to a building.
Not the access to the building, sir, but access, you know, a six-inch curb high. So a car, if a car is going to go to the entrance to the, to exit that access road, a car has to jump over six-inch curb. If.
I don't, I don't see an entrance or exit beside that building that's going to cause that problem. Can you, can you go up there and point to where you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Please?
See, the curvature right there.
Yep.
This is being the property line right here.
Yep.
This, actually, this layer right here, around here, will have six-inch curb.
I got that.
And there is a, a gate right here, which is access to the back of these buildings. That six-inch curb will prevent a car from coming in and going through to get to the alley behind between the building and the fence.
And is that, and is that little tiny alleyway between the building and the fence normal traffic?
Sir, sir, please, please come back to the microphone. Sir, sir, please, please come back to the microphone.
As David mentioned, that he used this as emergency access, number one, and also for loading and unloading to the back of those buildings. He bring in trucks to load stuff and unload stuff from the building. And also, he used it to maintain his utilities, which happened to be in that alleyway. And the reason VDOT actually requires that entrance deflector to be at the property line rather than embedded into the property line, because if he's gonna build, if he's gonna build another entrance on that property, then he can't, because two entrances right next to each other. So that's why that distance is required to be minimum of six feet or 20, or equal to the radius, whatever, whichever greater. And I highlighted that in the standard, VDOT standard you have in front of you.
Sir, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. You may be seated. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come and speak on this public hearing item, please come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening, everyone.
Councilwoman Bryant, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at the notes that say that on May 5th, the, there was a revision to the conceptual site plan showing that the apron no longer encroaches on the neighboring property. Is this reflecting that change?
Dr. Coleman, I believe that that's something that one of your staff members may be able to answer, perhaps. So if you could take the floor and call on your staff member.
Dr. Russell, do you have any input on that?
Yes.
Thank you.
I do. The, the portion of the apron that it appears that it's extending along the adjacent property owner, it's actually in the public right of way. Does that, I see some nods?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for that clarification, ma'am. Sir?
Good evening, everybody.
Please, did you have another question, ma'am? Okay. Please state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
My name is Michael Palkovic. I'm a registered civil engineer with Virginia, State of Virginia. I live at 105 South Palm Avenue in Virginia Beach. I was the engineer that put the concept plan together, which was what these graphics are based off of. We used city, or I'm sorry, Virginia Department of Transportation standard details. Initially, the entrance was located as such because it wasn't existing entrance. All we did was basically just put some ready eye on it. Once it was brought to our attention that the adjacent property owner would, and was not going to be using that entrance along with the owner at 680 Military Highway, we revised the concept plan to slide that entrance over. So additional information related to the, just from a exhibit standpoint, the limits of disturbance for that entrance is less than the state, or the city's 2,500 square foot limit that would require us to do any type of other site or any type of improvements. So this whole conversation is really about installing one entrance and some trees. We are not proposing any additional site improvements, no additional changes to grade. The standard detail that I used was a standard VDOT commercial entrance. It does have a six-inch curb. There are other options that we can use. If that is still an issue, we could do something with a moundable curb, which is just a little bit different radius that just allows for a vehicle to roll up over there. I also just have some additional, I guess, there's a survey done in 2015 of the adjacent property that shows the width from the existing property line to the permitted building on that lot, and it's less than 20 feet, so it cannot be used for an emergency access. So there is no current city deemed emergency access along that property line currently.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishes to come and speak on this item, please come forward, state your name and address. You'll have five minutes.
Hello. Sherman Tyler, 1812 Park Avenue. I'm trying to figure out why we taking so long with this. We've had people who have came and heal with all their ducks in a row with permits. One instance, the man on High Street who wanted to do the book club by day and by night, he wanted to do karaoke.
Thank you. We have a call of point of order, so stop. What's your point of order, councilman?
Mayor, the speaker's direction has nothing to do with our decision on.
Exactly. I'm sorry.
The use permit at hand.
That is correct. And, and, and so this, sir, just let me make it clear for you.
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing.
Gotcha.
This is not about what a perception is. This is a public hearing on the item that we're discussing.
Okay.
If you're not speaking specifically to the public hearing item, then you need to. If you decide that you do not want to, then, sir, you must take a seat.
I'm gonna speak specifically about the issue.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay. The issue I'm having, everybody has to comply to rules and regulations to get these different permits. These people, to my understanding, have been operating for a year or two without that. And while we having this long conversation, they haven't complied. Once again, I've seen it a million times down here, where people have complied and they got shot down because it was a banquet hall or a nightclub.
Sir, sir, it's not, it's not about what you've seen with other people. We're specifically talking about this public hearing item. That is your second.
Okay.
So the next time that you refer to other people and what they have done.
Let's make it fair. All I'm saying, let's make it fair.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Public hearing is still open. If you wish to come and speak, you have five minutes. State your name and address.
Yes, again, my name is Jonathan Lutter, 428 Plumber Drive, Chesapeake, Virginia, 23323. And again, I just wanted to state, most of this property, even on the Victory Boulevard, probably over six or seven acres have been in our family. David probably knows since probably the 40s. It's low land. In the past, I've had engineers from the city come out, and y'all let them build houses on Smithville Road. And I said, I said, hey, man, this is low land. They don't, they can't support this drainage. And he basically said, hey, Mr. Lutter, if you don't have an easement, then you're out of luck, basically. And I did that probably in 2021. I've had to stick you down there numerous times, probably within the seven or eight years. I've always, I've always fought it, and right now, we're just trying to make it right. We got the junkyard moved off of there. We keep it clean. We keep the ditch clean. I don't think you could probably bring the people up there from Public Works saying they probably have to never come out there and clean and cut my ditch on Decrete Boulevard. And it's low land all over the place. You can come out there after a rainstorm, and you can see the drainage is bad, all the way down to the railroad tracks on Decrete Boulevard to the city line. And then if you go on Claremont Street, there's trucks.
Sir, sir, I understand what you're saying. You've had an opportunity to speak before.
Thank you.
And I think we're saying the same thing over again.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, we're trying to make things right.
In the interest of time.
Thank you. I agree. All right. Thank you very much.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I agree with the previous speaker. We've spent a lot of time on what in fact is a family feud. And given such, my question to the city attorney, is there any particular legal exposure here, knowing that there's a feud going on, and sometimes feuds are settled in accord of law?
City Attorney, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for that question. I will say that as long as this council decides the matter on relevant issues to the use permit and not to the resolution of any dispute connected to this family dispute, that we are in safe waters. We have spent a considerable amount of time, but this is a public hearing, and everyone is entitled to speak. We've given that opportunity to them. We've met our obligation. The mayor just needs to close the meeting, and we should vote or do as you see fit.
This public hearing?
Thank you, Madam Attorney.
Yes, sir.
And I will be voting no, because rules have been broken. I'm, I'm really shocked that this got through Planning Commission, quite frankly, on a five to zero vote to come here. Obviously, things weren't settled there, yet they forwarded it to council, so I'll be voting no.
Vice Mayor, and at this time, this public hearing is closed. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to deny.
Is there any additional discussion? Please vote electronically.
We need a change of vote first.
Okay, we, we need some time. We're having some technical issue here, so.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Just for clarity, the motion was to deny, correct?
That's what the motion was. Yes, ma'am.
Motion to deny. But who the motion?
Who, who made, who made the initial motion?
Councilman Tillage.
Councilman Tillage?
Yes.
And then it was seconded by Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Please vote electronically.
This item has been denied, 7-0.
Thank you. Our next item, item B, U.P.-25-04. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing resolution we are considering for this item?
Churchland, resolution granting the request of B. Ashby for a use permit to operate an event space banquet hall at 6031 High Street West in the general mixed-use zoning district. The property is owned by Cityline LLC. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as commercial. Planning Commission regiments approval with conditions. And the resolution reads, "Resolution granting a use permit to B. Ashby to operate an event space banquet hall at 6031 High Street West."
Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant present? If you will come forward, ma'am, state your name and address. You will have 10 minutes.
Good evening. My name's Belinda Ashby. I stay at 2433 Bugle Drive, Chesapeake, Virginia, 23321. I want to thank y'all for allowing me to come up and speak, and also for hearing my request for permit use. I've always been an entrepreneur. I started off very young. I'm a hard worker. I've retired 30 years on the waterfront, so I understand what the other previous was talking about, the logistics. I started off young with paper routes and crab factories, and so I've worked hard. I retired, and this is my business to continue moving on. So I've requested to, to get a permit use. I have a venue in Chesapeake on Taylor Road. I've been in business for four years. It seats 100 people, and as we have grown, we've come to the issue that we're not large enough for what people want for us. So we're a small space that seats 100, and we're being booked out to go other places for bigger venues. So my search led me to 6031 High Street. And so I've applied for the permit use so that I could open up a venue that will service a larger clientele.
Did you have any more comments or anything else you wanted to say regarding your use permit, ma'am?
I don't think so. I think they had put, request certain things for us to clear up, and we're, we're working on them as far as like, I think, the sign. I have requested more time than what they was saying I could receive because my clientele are of different cultures. And so in order to be able to appeal to everybody, I requested that my time be allowed till 2:00 in the morning, because with African cultures, they start later in the evening than most cultures. Also, I used to run a restaurant, a historical restaurant in Newport News, and so I would like to incorporate a restaurant with my venue because it makes it easier to pay the bills.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions from my colleagues on counsel for the applicant? Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna recommend that we defer this item to the last meeting of August. As you know, Mayor, we, staff is working on some regulations that we can address this relatively new industries that are coming to Portsmouth. So that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, sir. And Councilman Dotson, sir, you have the floor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. My, it's not for this applicant. My question, though, is for permitting zoning.
Okay. If, 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 Dr. Coleman, could you please take the floor and, and please bring forward your, your staff member to answer any question my colleague may have?
As I understand, it's one of the conditions for this is a sign modification to the property. Do you know if there is allowance for us to give an extension on that one condition? Should we so decide? Is there a, is there a conveyance for that?
Councilman Dotson, who are you referring the question to? Because we don't have a permits and inspection person here. We have our planning director here.
Oh, I thought they were the ones that handled it.
No.
No. Would you like to address the issue?
I can get back to you on that answer, but, you know, I don't want to get into the parliamentary procedures, but I know there was a motion, so.
Right. If it's to be deferred, we can handle it later. Thank you.
Well, let me, let me just clear up something. First of all, there is a motion, but that, the motion preceded the discussion. Normally, we have the discussion, then there's the motion. We still have the applicant before us. So we want the questions specifically now, if we have questions for the applicant, they need to be directed toward the applicant. If there are additional questions after the applicant takes their seat, then we can ask those questions. But right now, questions are specifically for the applicant. Are there any questions for the applicant? Councilwoman Thomas, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation and coming before us today. I know it's not easy being an entrepreneur, so I did want to ask, I saw that the Planning Commission had a question regarding security, and you mentioned that you don't have any plans for security because your Chesapeake location does not need security. And of course, Chesapeake and Portsmouth are two different cities. So wanted to understand, is your, is it a hesitation for security, or you, like the type of events you plan on having there? You don't need, deemed to need security? Just wanted to get an idea behind that.
Well, they didn't say particularly what they want as far as security. Presently, the building has cameras on the inside and the outside of the building, so we're able to see what goes on. My private events are usually graduations, baby showers, birthdays, retirements, just about any type of private event that people would like to have. And usually, because of the cost of their event, they usually don't invite people to their event that would be a problem. I have not seen it in four years in the location that I'm in. Anytime I see that there may be a younger crowd, and they appear not to be with parents or someone of older, I let them know that they need to bring in security and that I need to see their bond and license. need to see their bond and license. Usually, when I ask that, they usually either hang up on me, or they don't get back to me once I have given them an invoice.
Vice Mayor Moody, sir?
Actually, speaking on the subject of security, I will read Condition Number Four. Prior to commencing operation, the operator of the establishment shall submit a written security plan to the zoning administrator and obtain written approval of the plan from the zoning administrator. Then the zoning administrator may seek comment from the Portsmouth Police Department regarding the proposed plan. So that was one of the established conditions. In fact, that's Condition Number Four on Page Number Five. So, a security plan must be presented for approval prior to commencing operation.
Yes, sir. So I did go down to the police department and spoke with them and asked, was there anything that they would recommend? And they told me that they do not make recommendations as far as security plans or anything of that sort, and that I needed to come back to the Planning Commission, that's what they told me.
Well, I think the Condition Number Four, which came from the Planning Commission, says that the operator must put together a security plan, then have it approved by the zoning administrator. That's how, that's how it works, and the administrator may seek comment from the police department. Of course, I have trouble with that word "may." I think that word should be "shall" seek approval, but in any event, the, that's what Condition Number Four reads.
So are there any other questions from my colleagues on council? Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, and Vice Mayor Moody brings up a good point about the actual condition. My, and I think it's good to get some clarity here as well, that sounds like it's the security overall plan for the business. My question was security on an individual event-by-event basis. So the security plan could say for each event, you are going to require, I guess, license and bonding, or something, I don't want to put words in what it would include, but I was asking overall what your plan was for each individual event, but I think Vice Mayor Moody's, to his point, in the use conditions, that was one of the requirements, so if you're saying that you already tried to get that, but you didn't get any feedback, is that, I want to get some clarity there, or what?
Councilwoman...
What happens in that? Thank you, city attorney, if you could offer some clarity.
Yeah, thank you, let me just jump in here. I think what happened here is that the Vice Mayor is clarifying what she had indicated that security wasn't defined for her, he's clarifying that it is defined and what that is. She responded that her attempts to do that included contacting the police officer. He is clarifying that that is not what is required of you, you're required to do what's outlined in four, which he is not in a position to explain to you, but it's more than what you suggested. And so it does include what you've alluded to earlier, that all should be in that security plan. It is the security plan, it is the all-encompassing plan, and you have to really read the conditions very carefully so to be sure you're in compliance. Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you very much. And so seeing no other questions from my colleagues, ma'am, you may take your seat.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, if you wish to come and speak on this item.
Mayor, members of city councils, since this is going to be deferred to the last meeting in August, I just want to give you all that date, and that date is August 26th.
Okay. That will be the date for deferral, and we will hold that, and when we call for the vote, we will make sure that that's a part of the motion. So what we will do at this time is open the floor. Once again, this is a public hearing, if you want to come and speak on this item, you can come forward, you will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Okay, sir, you have an opportunity.
That was a quick one.
Indeed it was. Please state your name and address, you have five minutes.
Elliot Cohen, I live at 3613 Point Elizabeth Drive in Chesapeake. I'm the owner of Cityline Plaza. Let me try first to clarify what happened with a security plan. The Planning Commission, at that meeting, requested a security plan, but didn't define that, and until we got a printout sheet from the planning, from zoning, that we still didn't get an answer as far as what the definition of, it was my interpretation that if the event center closed down at twelve o'clock, there wasn't security needed, but because she was requesting until two o'clock, they wanted to have a security plan. I called the City of Portsmouth Police Department and spoke to Sergeant Adams, who then referred me to Officer Hall, who said he would check into it with his superiors and get back to me, they got back to me that day, and said, and my request was, we're not the first event center, so therefore I assume that somebody had designed or developed or written a plan that we could get a copy of, so in doing that...
Excuse me, Mr. Cohen, I don't mean to cut you off, but this applicant is the one that we're speaking to in regards to the security plan. If you're suggesting that that is your role, or you have some role in that, this is purely for the applicant. The security plan that you're speaking to, we've already asked the applicant about the security plan, so as it relates to who is responsible for the security plan, that is the applicant, sir.
I was trying to clarify what had transpired. My suggestion is that the Planning Commission needs to define what they're asking the applicant to do. Here's a security plan, written, was ready to submit to the city. The applicant can do it if you don't want the owner of the property to do it.
That is the applicant's responsibility, sir.
Okay.
Not yours.
The other request I had was, we were told that the sign on the building was not grandfathered because of a conditional use permit application. Apparently, that kills all grandfathered signs. The sign's been there for fifty years, and I was going to ask that they consider the fact that that sign has been there. It's not hurting anybody, nobody's complained that we could leave the sign up. If that is the case, I did check to see if we could redesign the building so that the sign would be in front of the building, below the roof line, and I was told at this point we could put that in, so I was going to ask for what Dr. Dotson was talking about as far as being able to leave the sign until we can get that permit taken care of. But you can't get a permit, catch twenty-two, you can't get a building permit until you get the conditional use permit.
That is correct, sir.
Right, so I was asking for some time to not have to remove the sign, and possibly, as Dr. Dotson was referring to, is to be able to leave the sign until we can get the permit done.
The conditions are stated in the document, sir.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, if you wish to come and speak on this public hearing item, you can do so. Seeing none, this public hearing item is closed. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second to defer? We have a motion to defer? And we need a second. We have a motion and a second to defer this item, is there any, until the date of referral, a deferral, sir, is? August 26, 2025. Thank you. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item has been deferred to a meeting of August 26 by a vote of six, one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and that concludes our public hearing items for this evening. We are now moving on to our city manager's report. Item 25-160, and Madam Clerk, could you please, the ordinance, read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Ordinance accepting additional home investment partnerships program, American Rescue Plan Act funds, in the amount of $1,727 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and appropriated said sum in the FY 2026 Community Development Fund budget for supportive services and other eligible activities.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item has been adopted, seven, zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 25-161, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Ordinance accepting funds in the amount of $20,000 from the Beasley Foundation Incorporated, and appropriated said amount in the FY 2025 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services, and for the pediatric pre-hospital care program.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
There we go.
This item has been adopted, seven, zero.
Item, next item, 25-162, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Ordinance accepting child and adult food care program funding in the amount of $444,374.93 from the United States Department of Agriculture, and appropriated said amount in the FY 2025 Grants Fund to reimburse the city for the provision of meals under the program.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item has been adopted, seven, zero.
Item 25-163, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Ordinance accepting a stormwater local assistance fund grant in the amount of $933,652 from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, and appropriated said amount in the stormwater category for the FY 2025 Capital Improvement Fund budget for the Green Lakes Three retrofit program, project, sorry.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item has been adopted, seven, zero.
Item 25-164, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $1,067,316 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, and appropriated said funds in the FY 2025 Grants Fund to provide funding to the Portsmouth Sheriff's Office for the salaries and benefits of eleven full-time school resource officers.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically. Hold on, hold on. Hold on, time. Please vote electronically.
This item has been adopted, seven, zero.
That concludes our city manager's report items for this evening. Now we move to new business, item 25-165, boards and commissions. And Councilman Hugel, do we have any boards or commissions to report tonight?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, we do not have any items for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Moving right along, item 25-166, items submitted by council members. Are there any items to be submitted by council members? Councilman Hugel, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, once again, another weekend has come and gone in Portsmouth, and Parks and Rec knocked it out of the park with the Seawall Fest and all of the attendant activities, so I want to congratulate them. Also, our Waste Management Group and the Clean the Bay Day on Saturday morning, so we had a bunch of city staff folks working all through the weekend, and I just want to extend our thanks on behalf of my colleagues. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, sir. Our next speaker is Councilwoman Bryant. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Several of us attended today the grand opening, ribbon cutting of the Bon Secours Women's Imaging Center on Portsmouth Boulevard, which is very near the Food Lion and East Side Pizza, it's very conveniently located. It was a beautiful ceremony, or excuse me, service, ribbon cutting, that really honored what this facility will do for women in Portsmouth. So this is a location where women can go to receive mammograms, ultrasounds, and bone density scans, and it's conveniently located, it's beautifully renovated, and it really will address a problem for our city, which is that breast cancer affects women in Portsmouth more than other localities. So if you do not have a reservation, excuse me, an appointment to attend, please make sure preventative healthcare is essential, so do not delay, and we look forward to seeing women served better by this facility. I also had the pleasure this morning of attending the Old Town Business Association meeting, and wanted to announce some good news that was given there. The Main Street Program, which is a grant that the city has received to make improvements along High Street, has launched some new initiatives, so the OTBA is offering lighting upgrades, the median will be lit from the waterfront to Effingham, and also there are incentives to local businesses within that corridor to light their exterior and to build security camera systems on their exterior as well. There are already $35,000 committed to this project to incentivize the local businesses, and there's a process that if you would like your business to be included in the lighting and security plan, that it will be streamlined and become very easy to get that collectively done as a unit along High Street. There is also a $70,000 grant that was announced to attract new businesses to the downtown corridor, and so that money will help facilitate a more inclusive, comprehensive, better Main Street ecosystem downtown, so that's some good news, and if you don't follow the Old Town Business Association, you can certainly follow them and the Portsmouth Partnership for more information on those programs. But that's some very positive news in getting our downtown better lit for safety reasons, and more businesses thriving also, which will improve public safety. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Dotson, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I'd love to ask if we could get, from the city management, if we could get an update on the speed plan for the Waterview neighborhood? They have been waiting since I was a kid in 1962, we bought our first house in the city, to have some traffic control, which they've been told has been in the plan for many, many, many months now, and I'd love to see if we can get an update for them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Coleman, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Councilman Dotson, we'll take a look at the Waterview neighborhood and see about the speed plan, and get back with you on that. You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I was honored today to deliver in remarks at the Swearingen Ceremony for eight new police officers for the city of Portsmouth. Want to commend them on their commitment to public service, and particularly to their commitment to the city of Portsmouth. It was a wonderful event. On a national level, this Saturday, the Army, and I don't think we have any Army vets up here, but I'm sure we have some Army folks that live in the city of Portsmouth, the Army will be celebrating... The Army will be celebrating its 250 anniversary come Saturday. I think there will be a parade celebrating that in Washington. And also, it's Flag Day. Flag Day, Flag was adopted by the Continental Congress in 1777. So actually, the Army was in existence two years prior to the flag being adopted. So I just wanted to point that out. Fly your flag on Saturday. Hope you fly it every day if you can, but wanted to make those things clear.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to quickly mention, of course, we just celebrated all of our Portsmouth Public School, high schools graduation. And we had Ian come in front of us today. I had the pleasure of attending IC Norcom's graduation, and his speech as the valedictorian was excellent. Of course, we all know about the incident that occurred over the weekend after graduation. And I just wanted to speak briefly to that since we are, you know, going into the summer. And as a mom as well with teens, I know one of the key things as a parent is to keep them busy, make them, keep them busy. They have that free time outside of school. So just recently, on our city webpage, so Pete, I'm not sure who from your team shared it, the city did provide a list of summer activities for all our kids and teens to make sure they have an unforgettable summer, but also a safe summer, and are occupied and busy, and getting all those good, just good activities and good experiences. So I won't go through all of them, but of course, we have the Summer Race Camp, the Portsmouth Palace Summer Camp, YMCA. There's different storytimes at the library. There's also free summer meals, thanks to Portsmouth Public Schools and their grilled cheese, grilled cheese truck, so that no student will go hungry, no child will go hungry over the summer. There's also, of course, Sunset Thursdays for evening fun as well, for family evening fun. But there's a whole list of other activities available. So if you're a parent or a teen looking to have something to do over the summer, I implore you to go to our city's Facebook page, our city's website, just to keep our children involved and active and safe through the summer. I also wanted to highlight that we have Portsmouth United, and there's also a lot of nonprofit groups that are offering great activities for certain children. And I think that'd also be a great avenue to explore if you're looking for something for your child or teen to do. So I'm always an open resource to help any parent, any child, any teen that is looking for something to do over the summer. We can find something. Then I'll also mention that the YMCA, as well as I think Planet Fitness, has free gym memberships for all teens, I believe. So any teens that want to stay active, I know transportation could be an issue, but that's also another resource or something that's available. We just want to make sure that everyone has a safe summer in our city. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And last thing I'd like to mention, on Saturday, we did have Clean the Bay Day here in the city of Portsmouth. So I just want to give a thank you to all of our volunteers, number one. And number two, for our city staff, our waste management team, who does an incredible job of helping to keep our city clean. Also, to all those folks who worked from our city, our city staff, and certainly Dr. Coleman, for all of the hard work that was put in by all of our staff this weekend. At all of the events, it was very well attended, and we could not have gotten that work done without our city staff. And so I just wanted to take a moment to thank you all. Thank you for that. And we will move on to the next item, which is report on pending items. Item twenty-five dash one-sixty-seven. And Dr. Coleman, do you have any items to report on?
Thank you, Mayor. The report back items are in your packet. You could take a look at those at your leisure. I did notice three that were, that was from a previous work session. All that information is there related to the foster care presentation that was given, as well as the assistance care surrounding that.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. We've now come to item twenty-five dash one-sixty-eight under new business. Non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. And at the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address counsel on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body, rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his/her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Our first speaker is Mr. Gary Bahina. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, city manager, Your Honor, city attorney. My name is Gary Bahina. I'm president of the Friends at the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard Museum. Shipyard, the Friends are an independent 501(c)(3) here in Portsmouth. We provide program and financial support for the city's two maritime museums, the Lightship Museum and the Shipyard Museum. I'm here tonight to talk to you, as I do every year, before our paddle battle and after our paddle battle, and to just fill you in on some new activities. The Paddle Battle, it's coming into its fifth year. It's a fundraiser, our main fundraiser, to help us raise money for the program support and the other things that we do, which are all dedicated to the city's two museums, maritime museums, including our oral history project with IC Norcom High School, which this coming fall will head into its fifth year. We're very proud of that partnership, and all our partnerships with the city. The Paddle Battle is in its fifth year now. It is a series of stand-up paddleboard and kayak races from High Street Basin to the Hammerhead Crane and back. We have, we welcome people sixteen to over seventy. We have people who have been in it all five years. The mayor's raced it all but one. I'm hoping to see him back out there again. Alana can't get married two years in a row. So we're hoping to have that happen. This year, we are having our inaugural Junior Paddle Battle. This is something that we've wanted to do since we started the Paddle Battle. We're going to offer free kayak lessons for Portsmouth youth ages eight to fourteen. We've established some incredible partnerships to make this happen. One of them is with Hoffler Creek Wildlife Preserve, and with Virginia Beach Surf Sessions, who puts on the East Coast Surfing Championship. They're providing us with their lead youth instructors to help us offer the lessons to our kids.
Excuse me, sir. Would you mind giving that, or ask, hold on, Sergeant at Arms, would you mind getting the poster, so he can pass it, we can pass it around, so everyone can see that, please? Thank you, sir. You may continue.
What we're going to do with the Junior Paddle Battle is we're going to offer about half an hour, forty minutes of on-land instruction to kids before we put them in tandem kayaks with experienced kayakers, and then about thirty, thirty-five minutes of in-the-water instruction. Hoffley Creek and Virginia Beach Surf Sessions are providing the on-land instructors and the kayaks, the tandem kayaks that we're going to be using. In addition to some Portsmouth citizens who are lending us their kayaks as well, so that we can put this on. We've established some great partnerships in order to do this in addition to Hoffler Creek and Virginia Beach Surf Sessions. We are also working very closely with, of course, the city, as we always do, and with PRHA and the YMCA. And that's something we're also very proud of. In order to broaden the diversity of the group, the kids that are going to be presenting the program, we reached out to PRHA. The problem is that we needed to have kids who knew how to swim, which is a challenge in this community. So we reached out to the YMCA, who has a scholarship program to allow, to teach kids for free, who qualify financially, to swim. PRHA is going to be identifying kids in the PRHA community, and we're going to put them through free swim lessons, the YMCA, so that those kids can participate in this event. We are holding aside, we have a maximum of thirty-six kids that we can run through in the first year, just because of safety concerns and making sure we learn how to do this safely. We're holding aside half those positions for our PRHA partnership with the YMCA, and we hope to fill all those positions, all those slots. For anybody who wants to participate, go to, just Google Portsmouth Paddle Battle. Up at the top of the page, you'll see a link to the Junior Paddle Battle, especially if you're in a PRHA community. Go there, and by this weekend, there'll be links for how you can get your kids involved. So we hope to have that all happen. We welcome you to all come out and watch it. It's the first Saturday after Labor Day, September sixth. See you there.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Aaron Cody.
Good evening, city council. Thank you for your service. I'm Aaron Cody. My address is 2908 Tambarke Lane. The last time I spoke to you about ranked choice voting, I explained how the voting method works like an instant runoff election. This helps elect candidates with a majority of voter support. Demonstrated majority support for an elected official is the main benefit of ranked choice voting. There are five additional benefits, each one building on the previous. First, one way ranked choice voting helps elect candidates with a majority of voter support is by limiting the impact of spoiler candidates. Instead of a voter being forced to choose between a preferred candidate with little chance of winning, or another candidate more likely to win, the preferred candidate can be ranked first, and the other candidate ranked second. Limiting the impact of spoiler candidates means having many candidates in an election is less likely to split the vote, which can result in the election of a candidate who does not have a demonstrated support of the majority of voters. Splitting the vote is what happened in the last two Portsmouth City Council elections, when eleven candidates ran for three seats. The vote was split among so many candidates that the winning candidates did not receive a majority. The solution to this less-than-fully democratic outcome is not fewer candidates or less choice. The solution is ranked choice voting. This leads to the second additional benefit, more choice. If having many candidates no longer jeopardizes the ability to win majority support, it encourages more candidates to run for office because they know their participation will be less likely to split the vote. More importantly, no potential candidate needs to be pressured not to run to avoid splitting the vote. More candidates leads to the third additional benefit, increased voter participation. Candidates energized and passionate enough to run for office in spite of having little chance of winning can motivate eligible voters who may otherwise choose not to vote when there are perhaps only two choices, and neither is preferred, or they think their vote will be pointless or wasted if cast. More candidates also leads to the fourth additional benefit, reduced negative campaigning. If the choice voter's face is not binary, it encourages candidates with similar policy objectives to build consensus in order to win majority support. It is difficult for one candidate to attack another candidate personally, and then ask that candidate's voters to rank the attacker as a second preference. Reduced negative campaigning leads to the fifth additional benefit, focusing on issues. If negative campaigning is de-incentivized because it jeopardizes majority support, candidates will not waste resources attacking other candidates. They will focus on engaging as many voters as possible and getting broad support for their policy solutions. The main benefit of ranked choice voting is helping to elect representatives with a demonstrated majority of voter support. There are also five additional benefits that make ranked choice voting a better method than we currently use in Portsmouth. My next presentation will address criticisms of ranked choice voting. I will be available after this meeting to answer questions or listen to comments. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Jesse Turner. Jesse Turner. Okay, we'll move to the next speaker. The next speaker is Ethan DeRosa.
Good evening, Mayor Glover and council members. I'm here to speak tonight against the city's pending agreement with the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE. According to ICE's website, Portsmouth is currently contracting to train its own police force into, quote, "certified," unquote, functional immigration officers.
Sir, sir, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
The city of Portsmouth currently does not have any agreement, sir. And let me just, so I can clarify something for you. Part of when you come before to speak under our speaker rules, we say clearly that you need to speak on matters that only council can affect. Council does not affect ICE or any other organization that you may be referring to. So if you want to speak specifically to a matter that this council can affect, you're welcome to proceed. If you are speaking to an item that we cannot affect, that we have no jurisdiction over, then I would ask that you complete your comments, and please have a seat.
Yes, sir. So according to ICE's own website, a current agreement with them is pending right now.
Sir, sir, we don't, we don't manage ICE's website. We do not manage any of those websites. What I'm suggesting to you and asking you,
Yes.
unless you speak to something that we affect as a city council, sir, I am asking you to have a seat, if you do not do that. So you may proceed if you can speak to something that the city council can affect. If not, I'm asking you to take your seat, sir.
So Mayor Glover, may I ask for some clarification then, since I seem to have misunderstood some things?
Sir, I, I, all I can tell you is, we are not engaged in any discussion as a city. That is not under our direction. So that is the clarification that I've just provided to you.
So do I understand then that this, according to ICE, pending agreement with the city of Portsmouth is not under your jurisdiction or influence?
Sir, I am not aware of any pending agreement with ICE or any other organization that you have just referred to. So what I'm suggesting to you, if that is the source in which you have gained your information, I would, I would ask you to go to that source and then inquire of them. But we are not in a position, we do not affect that, and we do not have any pending information regarding that. That is what I'm sharing with you today.
Although such an agreement would require this city council's approval for funds that would go towards supplying and training pursuant to such an agreement, yes?
Sir, this is not a question-and-answer period. If you do not speak specifically, I am asking you to please have a seat. If you do not change your course of speaking, then I'm asking you to take your seat.
So you're asking me to speak on any matter that does not refer to ICE, is that correct?
That the city council can affect. That is what I'm asking you to do, sir.
Can the city council affect the sheriff's office of the city of Portsmouth?
The city council does not run the sheriff's office. The sheriff is an elected constitutional officer of the state of Virginia. He is not governed by anything, and we do not tell the sheriff what to do, sir. He is a constitutional officer that is elected. And if you have a question specifically for the sheriff, I suggest that you call Sheriff Michael Moore, and he would be more than happy to talk with you.
Of course. But the operative word, I believe, was any matter that this council can influence, not, not over.
Sir, 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 there's no more dialogue with you and I. You either speak to the issue, as I shared with you, or I'm asking you to have a seat. And that is the last conversation I'm going to have tonight.
Very well. Then I will avoid any reference to any such pending agreement, according to ICE's website. I will simply say that our immigrant community that our immigrant community is being, is being villainized, and is currently vulnerable on a national front. I am simply asking that this council hold firm for the sake of immigrant and incarcerated communities, defend people who are facing an historic level of hate and vitriol from our leadership, and show that Portsmouth will not give way to any sort of bullying or coercion, and will demonstrate what it means to truly protect and serve their communities. And I will leave it at that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Joseph Kelly. Mr. Kelly, if you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Hello, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, the council. Mayor Glover, how you doing? My name is Joseph Kelly. My address is twenty-seven Hudson Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. I'm, I'm for the, everybody know why I'm here. I'm for the, I'm for the family, I'm for the city of Portsmouth. That's what I stand for. So, I'm gonna bring up two issues. So, Island Pulse Music Festival is gonna happen with or without anybody's support, because Island Pulse Music Festival, I am doing so I can raise money for the children, for the youth of Portsmouth, to help build, help these recreational centers. We talk about getting these kids off the streets, we really gotta put it into action. Talking and walking is two different statements in life, and everybody knows, I wear that on my glove, on my sleeve. So, I'm letting y'all all know, April twenty-sixth, to everybody in the building, I'm gonna keep coming up here and preaching, Island Pulse Music Festival is going to happen in the city of Portsmouth. I'm inviting all the city councils to come out. This is for our children in this community, not no other city. I'm not doing this for nothing. I want those kids to reek from what we're doing, I want someone else to see what we're doing, but I want to do something about the streets with, for which I live in. Number two, gun violence is getting out of hand in the city of Portsmouth. We need more police presence in these streets. In my community alone, I've been there for five years. In the last five years, I didn't hear what I'm hearing recently in my community. What happened last weekend was crazy. For you to go to someone's graduations, you go into a graduation party, no one should be shot at a graduation party. That is ridiculous. That brings tears to my eyes. I literally, in the last two weeks, have heard two cars drive down my block. I live on Hudson Street, drive down my block, all you hear is flop, 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 flop. This is at eight o'clock at night. We're hearing gun, it's like Portsmouth is turning into Chiraq, and if we don't come together as a community and police these streets, police presence stops stuff, and we all know that. We need police presence in our communities. Police needs to be driving around. Kids need to be, Mayor, I, I had somebody the last time I came here, and they, they proposed to you that it should happen, but I really think Portsmouth should have some type of curfew for the youth, to get them off the street after a certain time in the night, before somebody's kid, or, I'm tired of, you know what I do every morning? I go on my computer, and I pull up, and I wanna read about what happened violently in my community. And I shouldn't have to do that. But I do it because I love my, my people in my community, I love giving to my community. And, Mr. Thomas, you know how I feel, my heart is big, like, it's time for us as a community. We are all responsible for our kids. And I lucked up, I was proud to walk in the night to see that young man get, get awarded for what he got awarded. I went through the same thing with my son, I raised my son by myself, but now it's time for me to give back to everybody else's children. So, please, I'm asking y'all, let's police these streets, let's get more cops, let's see more cops' presence, that'll keep the violent people running away.
Mr. Kelly, Mr. Kelly, let me, I did wanna, wanna let you know something. You spoke to a curfew. The city of Portsmouth has a curfew, and that curfew is from eleven PM to five AM. It is for seventeen and under, if my recollection is correct. So, we have a curfew, and we, along with you and many of the citizens in this city, encourage our parents, our leaders, our law enforcement, our churches, our educators, everyone, to be involved in the solution of reducing and eradicating violence and crime in our community. So, we are on the same page, sir.
I got you, I got you. I definitely got you. And all, all I could really add on to that is, I knew what parenting was, I was a great parent, I raised my kid, I'm gonna just preach it out to everybody, like, parenting is everything. It's everything, so, all you people here, please, it's time for all of us to be great parents.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Our next speaker is Serge O'Neill. Mr. Serge O'Neill, if you would come forward, state your name and address, sir, you will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor, members of council. I am Serge O'Neill, I reside at fourteen-twenty here, M Avenue, here in the city of Portsmouth. I'm glad the Speaker brought up parenting, because that is something we definitely need to look at. And my, looking at what just happened over the last weekend on Maple Avenue, that shooting is literally less than a mile, a half a mile, not even half a mile, from my house. The young man that was shot, I know him, grown to know him since I've been there. Right, wrong, or indifferent, whatever the situation might have been, we gotta think about it. Are we, are we gonna start creating a fund for some of these funerals, or some of these hospital bills, to be rectified when these kids are constantly being shot, or whatever the case might be? Because, you know, a lot of these families that these kids come from, they don't have the financial means to take care of them. So, we gotta start being proactive when we are addressing this youth violence issue. One thing I, I can say is that I've seen, like, in states like Maryland, there's a Parental Accountability Act. When city council, when that, when y'all start lobbying our, our state legislators for change that affects the city of Portsmouth, I would ask that you all create a parental accountability ordinance, or something, that pretty much holds the parents of these juvenile offenders accountable for the crimes that their children commit, because, see, guess what? There is a source of something, and if we're, we as parents are not doing our job, we can't expect the police to do it, we can't expect the jails to do it, we can't expect the schools to do it, we can't expect the churches to do it, we can't expect nobody else to pick up where we lay off at. The buck should stop with us, and there, if there is nothing, nothing else should matter when it comes to what happens to our kids, when it comes to us looking at it as from a parental perspective. And if these parents are not doing the job that they are ingrained to do when they birth these children, then guess what? Unfortunately, there has to be some parameter where it says, you know what? The law has to come into play. Because I can guarantee you, if a parent is fined, or if it has to go there, if they're jailed because they refuse to be a parent, it's gonna start ringing some bells. Because I know if it was me, see, well, that discussion ain't even gonna happen, because I'm not gonna let my kids get to that point. But if I was that parent that wasn't doing my job, that somebody else had to constantly, our police officer had to constantly come and get out my child, the schools have to constantly kick my child out for safety and security purposes, the stores are constantly getting burglarized, vandalized, whatever the case might be, even the church, St. Paul's, Holiness Church on the corner of Duquesne and Elm, was just vandalized again this past weekend by some kids from the, running around the neighborhood. One of those kids even tried to rob the person that was working on that church, trying to repair the damage. That child could have been shot dead right there, didn't know that man was armed. See, we, we, but see, the parents have to start, we start, we really have to start encouraging these parents to do that aspect, because see, had that man, not knowing what that child was gonna do, had that man legally and rightfully protected himself with his firearms that he had, what would that child would have been? God was really on that child's side. So, again, before we even have to go there, what could have happened? We need to start encouraging these parents. I mean, yes, I know we have these workshops, we have behavioral health care services with these classes, whatever the case might be, but that, when you start putting the law involved, that really moves where it needs to be moved. Because see, if you're not holding them accountable, some people, you're not holding them accountable, they just let it go to the wayside, because nobody is forcing them. Sometimes we have to use force, that is reasonable force, to ask for a provision in the law to say, if your child is out here turning up, stealing, killing, whatever the case might be, and you're, you as a parent are not intervening, then it's time for you to be held responsible. Now, I think that's a very fair ask. Think that, you know, a lot of people thought I was crazy when I said it the first time, but I can guarantee you, these people, these, these families, these businesses that are suffering at the hands of these kids that are out here out of control, they will attest to the fact that they are very tired and fed up of what is going on in this city with some of these kids that are out of control. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Sherman Tyler. Mr. Tyler, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Sherman Tyler, eighteen-twelve Parker Avenue. First, I'd like to say hello to everybody, I'd like to say, tell the council, thank you for actually listening the last couple of months. I can actually ride down Lincoln Avenue now, without turning my car up. Roads look nice, and the whole, the whole Lincoln, all we, all we to F. Hamlet, they're doing a lot of work in our community, potholes and sewage, and I'm glad that somebody finally, because we've been doing this, talking about that same street for years, and Camden and all that stuff, but they're finally doing the work, and I'm, and I'm grateful for that. The last meeting I was here, we was talking about the masks, you know, the skulls, and I think the mayor and the, the sister attorney came to me and said, Mr. Tyler, oh, we, we do have that in law that they, it's illegal for a person to conceal their, their face. So, my question is, if that's already on the law book, why do I see that every day in my community? It's June, and these guys still walking around with masks on their face. I see that every day, all day. Maybe some of y'all don't see it because, you know, you don't walk in my shoes that I walk in. I'm on Camden, I'm on Lincoln, I'm on Randolph, I'm on Elm, I'm on Fed, I'm on all those streets, Gimmerton, Chestnut, and I'm around them guys, and I see them coming in, in all the stores with their masks on. So, if we got that on the, on the book, why can't we implement that? And I'm talking about implement, vigorously implement that. If we got curfew on the books, we got to vigorously do this stuff because, dear, our kids are dying and getting shot up. Walking by a guy at my age, fifty-two years old, and I gotta put my hand on my gun because you wearing a mask, and I don't know what your intentions is. And we live that, and me and this guy right here, we live this stuff. That's not what, what we hear, we walk this walk every single day of our lives, you know, going downtown, applying for a concealed weapon license because you don't want to be the next victim. So, let's implement the things we got out on the book, let's not sit around and try to shoot shots. Well, we do have it on the book. Okay, well, why aren't you using it then? If it got on the book, why aren't you using it? To me, it kind of stood to this gorgeous way to tell me it's on the book, but we still got kids walking around Elm Avenue, June, nine-to-five degree weather, with a mask on. You know what they're up to. Can anybody in their right mind go and hide no mask on in June? I wear a wife-beater hat, and I'm hot. You know, can you imagine a ski mask? And, about done. And earlier, when I came up, we were discussing some stuff, and, you know, we, we, we have, we had attorney tonight get up here and admit that these people was functioning a business without license, for a year or two, four years or two. And we entertained it for a hour. Did not, the lawyer admitted that they did not, not only should they not got their license, they should be looked into and see if there's any money owed, or anything could be brought against them for being in our city, running a business, and not doing the right thing by it, you know? And until, until certain people look, when you look out your eyes, you got to see me as a human being, like you see other people. Like I said earlier, and I can say it, I guess, one individual came in here, and we even had, we had every single, not everybody, majority of the council was against him, they even called the chief of police to come against that guy, and that guy only just wanted a book club, and a, and a karaoke, even had the community come in and say, I bought the Loud Noirs, and you got nine clubs right beside his club. You know? We gotta look at people the same. And that's how our city is gonna grow, when you see me not as a black man, as a man. And when you judge me, judge me according to my characteristics. These people already established that they, that they was not gonna do right, already did not do right. Why are we entertaining that? But we got another person coming here who wanna do right, gonna comply to everything, and you make it fast, five minutes, you, you don't get it. Shot down. We may had to go and get a lawyer. I sit here that night, massive had to come in and, and represent that man. Shot him down in five minutes, and we took an hour with an individual who, who ain't even got license to even work in our city. But when you look at me, see me as a person. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Sheila Joseph.
Sheila Joseph, one-thirty-nine Grand Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. I just wanted to speak a little bit about the things that I had spoke about, the new billing system for our water. I understand that I was told on the third, but it's not, because I went and checked all the way up to the day, and I got my bill, it's not new. So, I would like for somebody to write me back the update of where we at with the billing system, because we still have a bill that we don't owe attached to our bills, and it's very frustrating, all these years, that we spend our money for to pay bills before time, sometime three or four days before it's due, sometime even longer. Depends on, you know, exactly what I feel like doing that day. But majority of the times, we pay our bill in advance, and I don't like the idea of keep making it look like our bill is due money when it's not. I'm gonna be honest, the city owed me some money, because I paid my bills, and then I found out my husband was paying it, and, but nobody never refunded us. I just wanted to speak on that, and I appreciate the hard work that y'all are doing. I'm gonna say, again, the update that I have been monitoring about the new flash and stop signs. People seem to respect it. Every now and then, you'll see someone still don't pay it no mind, but it's a study for that. And the speeding, I still want to get some information addressed about that. I know they working on it. The speeding in the community, and really in any parts of the city. I also want to speak about the good things that I see happening in Portsmouth. Turning up and going into the pipes and different other things, I noticed that. I haven't been taking pictures because I know they working on it. It's been a while, but I have a lifetime of pictures of the work that was going on that was neglected in the other communities. But I see some of the other communities that haven't had that opportunity I spoke about, and I do have all the maps to the whole city. And I'm just praying that the citizens step up more to speak on about the trees that is on the right-of-way of the city. We get written up for grass growing, and you have city codes, we just want to address those things for us, the city living up to their city codes that they give the citizens. Like, say, a hundred and fifty dollars, they wanted to charge us to cut the city grass. That's their ditch, the, uh, right where the telegram poles and the water meters and, you know, different other meters that's sitting there, that's property of a right-of-way of the city. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I tell people, you know, that I don't wanna cut the grass, because that's the responsibility of the ditches and the other things that the city of Portsmouth. because that's the responsibility of the ditches and the other things that the city of Portsmouth workers should do. I also still mention about trash can and recycling bins needs to enforce those rules and guidelines of people not doing what they supposed to do. Other than that, I thank all of you who voted to get things done in the time and manner. And it seems like it's a lot on y'all plate, and I appreciate what I see is going on. So have a good day.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Tillitt, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Joseph, I thought we had gotten the water bill straight, but I guess not. Mr. Coleman, if you could just provide counsel in a report back, the status of that and the issues to this point. And then also, you made comments in regards to violations or city property that may be in some disrepair. There's an app called C Click Fix. We really want to encourage residents to use that. You can take pictures, you can upload them, provide the exact address on it. And it goes to the correct department to be fixed, whether it's grass, potholes, trash cans may be broke, whatever it is, send it to the app, and it goes through our odds budsman. And then it gets directed to the appropriate department. I've used it numerous times, and I can say within 24 hours, sometimes 48 hours, the city staff is out there addressing it. So I want to encourage you, but also encourage residents throughout the city to please use C Click Fix.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Marvin Ridley. Mr. Ridley, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Portsmouth City Council. What I'm about to talk about is the recent cable laying and underground fiber optic work in my neighborhood. I live at 264 Dock Street here in the city of Portsmouth, which is, I guess, the Deep Creek Village subdivision. Verizon was in there early this year, and I had a huge problem with them. I come home one afternoon, and the truck was parked on my lawn, actually parked on my lawn. Talked to the driver, he said he's on the easement, not that far. Anyway, I took pictures of it. I even emailed Verizon, got no response. I posted on Facebook complaining about it. But this company here came around in the last couple of weeks. They came in the week prior to the lawn Memorial Day weekend. And I think they did a horrible job. The water main was, a water line was broken at my neighbor's house, so we was out of water for a while. I saw some of my neighbor's property, like the lawn lights left on the ground after they came through, might have crossed the street the neighbor. Mailboxes at an angle when they left. Anyway, I know that somebody called. I took pictures and posted on Click Fix, which I use often, and got a response. But what I'm really hurt by and disappointed by is my neighbor and I, who shared a little patch of grass between our driveway, spent our money on topsoil and seed and watering it for two weeks prior to them showing up and turning it up. City responded great, but he put just field dirt with rocks in it. Disappointing. I'm asking that, when these companies get asked you to come in and lay cable, and you give them the right of way to do so, hold them accountable for their actions. They did, this company right here did a terrible job. They had supervision out there on the week prior to Memorial Weekend. Two men stayed together the whole time. I watched. They never left each other's side. I think it's poor supervision. And I know a little bit about supervision. I'm a retired master of chief petty officer. And I've led many men. And that was poor. And you could tell that you were behind the curve because it rained prior to the Memorial Weekend. And you saw the runners just scurrying about. The work was haphazard. And I was really taken back how much damage they left, especially breaking the water, breaking the water line. City responded, fixed it, but it looks terrible. My neighbor really takes pride in keeping his lawn up. My neighbor in front of me, his glasses like carpet on a golf course. And now he's all, he's angry that now it's all torn up, another plate that's laid in the yard. So I'm all asking, send somebody out there and check on these people often. Don't let them get away with mistreating our neighborhoods. Because I'm expecting somebody else gonna come through soon. And what am I gonna face then? So I ask you just to take time and send somebody out there and take a look. And thank you for responding when somebody calls or sends a message through Click Fix or whatever. And lastly, somebody needs to take it Williams Court, which is adjacent to my neighborhood. It's in terrible shape. I rode through there prior to coming here tonight. There's litter everywhere. I mean, everywhere. And the water backs up in the Dollar Tree lot. It's still there. Yeah. So anyway, I'm just asking that whoever's out there to check on these things here, hold these people accountable, especially Williams Court. Find them, citation, I don't know. But get their attention. Because it's terrible. I mean, it is really, really terrible. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley. And Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ridley, my eyes are old. I couldn't see the name of that company on the door hanger that you had. Could you share that with us so we make sure we get the information and can follow up? Thank you.
And we'll get you, Dr. Coleman, did you have anything you wanted to recommend in terms of Mr. Ridley getting with staff to review his situation?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ridley, thank you for your comments. I did make some notes here, and I'm glad to hear that the staff did respond to you in a quickly, quick manner. And again, I'll follow up on the conditions of the grounds, as well as I'll get that information from Bernadette, who's sitting right beside you, so that we can follow up with the company that came out there. Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. While we're talking about holding contractors accountable, reminds me of Cedar Lane. We still have manholes that are below grade, particularly in front of Greenfield Farms entrance. They're probably two, some of them three inches below grade, which is not good for your automobile.
And Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. And thank you also, Mr. Ridley, for coming forward. You mentioned Williams Court has a litter issue as well. You mentioned, is that correct?
At the intersection of Victory and George Washington.
Could you please come to the microphone, sir, if you want to speak?
Is that the intersection of George Washington Highway and Victory Boulevard?
Okay, thank you, sir. I want to then follow up with our deputy city manager to also loop in our city manager. We had, I think, quite a bit of discussion as a council through citizen reporting. Vice Mayor Moody has been, you know, providing pictures from another area of the city. And I don't know, I would like to see something where we have a plan in place in our city to address the dumping and the littering. Some kind of way that's not just relying on citizen complaint and citizen photographs, but an actual strategic comprehensive plan. Because we've been kind of hitting, hitting the areas that we know about. But I would like to see a more strategic way that we are gonna really tackle the issue of dumping, especially those areas where people just, it's commonplace for them to do it, holding shopping centers account, owners of shopping centers accountable to keep their shopping centers clean in those different neighborhoods, alleyways. Again, Vice Mayor Moody had just been providing a lot of pictures for us in our emails. I've had a citizen reach out about dumping behind her house and off of Victory as well. So it sounds like while we're, you know, having the C Click Fix, if we can actually, outside of user or citizen input, if we have a plan to just tackle dumping and littering in our city, I would like to see that. If that's, if we can get some feedback and work session and thoughts around that for our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Anderson Cuffey Jr. Mr. Cuffey Jr., if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Anderson Cuffey. I live at 1229 Woods Way in Chesapeake, Virginia. I wanted to take a few minutes to talk about some of the crimes that are being committed in the area. You may or may not be aware of them already, but I wanted to take a few minutes and shine a light on them because it's a serious problem and based on my experiences on an organizational level. And I know that if it's happening to me, I know it's very likely it's happening to a lot more people, not just where it started for me, which is the state of California, but right here in the Hampton Roads area as well, because it's all connected. And it's something that if it isn't addressed and stopped, and the ones committing these crimes aren't held accountable, it's only gonna continue to affect, cause serious harm or ruin the lives of many more people, if not worse. For me, it stems from an attempt that was made in my life back in October of 2020, and it's crimes being committed with mine and I'm sure others' personal information, the problem of battered and abused women, and the victimization of men as well, and what that could lead to, and being assaulted and personally violated through technology. Law enforcement's already aware of the attempt and the other crimes that I'm gonna be talking about. One of the last times I spoke with the FBI in Los Angeles regarding the issue, I was told there's certain details they can't say as it's an ongoing investigation. And if they needed any additional information from me, they would have contacted me. And I've been reaching out to the FBI's Norfolk Field Office as well, right here off Clearfield in Chesapeake. So they're aware of the problem, but as of yet arrests haven't been made. So until arrests are made, I continue to make people aware. But like I said, for me, it stems from an attempt that was made in my life back in October of 2020 by Tori Roberts and others. Tori is the senior pastor of the Potter's House Church in Los Angeles. I was living in Los Angeles, California.
Sir, excuse me, excuse me. As I had indicated in previous comments, under our speaker rules, you have to speak specifically to items that we can affect as a city council.
Right.
We're in Portsmouth, Virginia, and unfortunately, we have no jurisdiction over what may have occurred in another city or in another locality. So as a result, unless you can speak to something that we can affect as a city council and complete your time, then I'm gonna ask you to redirect that conversation about Portsmouth and what we're doing here locally.
Right.
And if you can't do that, I'm gonna ask that you conclude your comments.
Okay, well, absolutely. There's crimes, organized crime in the area. And like I said before, for me, it stems from an attempt that was made in my life. It was a conspiracy, but it's crimes that are being organized, crime in the area.
Sir, once again, I, that is not applicable to what we can control in our locality. If there's not something specific that you are dealing with in Portsmouth that perhaps we could intervene with as a body, or I could refer you to our leadership team, our city manager, then, sir, I'm asking you to conclude your comments.
I appreciate it. The rest of what I wanted to say is printed up for you guys, so the city council members have it. And as far as being assaulted and personally violated through technology, as far as being assaulted and personally violated through technology, this is one avenue to prove it.
Sir, I hear you loud and clear, but unfortunately, we have to conclude your comments at this time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for attending the city council meeting. If there's no other business to conduct for the good of the order, this meeting is adjourned. Have a safe trip home.